Okay, I'll call this meeting to order. This is Alpine Town Council Meeting on October 7th at 7:00. First order of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Good evening. Councilman Larson.
Here.
Councilmember Burchard.
Here.
Mayor Green.
Here.
Councilman Weirder.
Here.
And, sorry, Weirda, excuse me. And Councilmember Scaviti.
Present.
Mayor Green, you have a quorum of the council with all members present.
All right, thank you. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion to adopt the agenda?
Second.
We have a motion that's been seconded to any discussion. All those in favor of adopting the agenda say aye.
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 All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
Motion for approval of consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion that's been seconded to any discussion?
Just a quick question on the AEF Business Plan. Is that just putting the plan into record?
Yeah, that's why we moved it out of the consent agenda. We'll have that under action items.
Okay.
Did you, do you have the latest and greatest?
I don't.
Okay.
I must have missed it.
Yeah, so Munich Code has it, but do you look on your sheet?
Oh, I have it here.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I just was wondering.
So we moved that out. It's on to action items, and we also moved one other thing.
The single audit.
Single audit, okay, yeah, so we'll.
So do we move those past the Thursday deadline? Is that how that works? I thought Thursday, like Thursday when I get this, then does it change? It can change again before tonight?
Yeah, we try to avoid that as much as we can, but that information was in there when you received it on Thursday, so. Okay, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
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 Now we're on to reports. So as many of you here in attendance and hopefully people at home notice, we have brand-new carpet, and the ladies in the office decided to paint the walls and did some accent walls. So I think it looks great, and if you get a chance to come in, take a look. But this has been needed for thirty-some odd years, so we're real happy with it. So if you come in, you can thank the ladies for the way that the walls look, the paint and everything. So they did a great job with that. I'll give you a quick update on the semi-quintcentennial committee. So we've met how many times now? Probably four?
Four.
Yeah, and the committee is being tasked with kind of brainstorming ideas. And so we've put a bunch of things up there, and a few things are sticking. But once we have some more concrete ideas to mention, I will do that. But things are going well already. We have some great ideas, so I'm super excited about the progress we're making for that. And that's about it for right now. Obviously, everyone's probably seen our signs. I'm getting comments from other municipalities saying how jealous they are of our signs, so I'm pretty proud of that. I also had to say that I'm jealous of Thane's mural, but we'll see if we can do something about that one of these days. But anyways, that's all I have for right now. Madam Clerk, do you have anything?
Thank you. So on September 23rd, Sarah and I attended the Safe Streets For All kickoff meeting. We're currently in the early stages of drafting a request for proposals for consultant services related to the Transportation Master Plan and Safe Streets Demonstration Project. Our goal is to get that done over the next week or so and then bring it back to council for review and approval so that we can advertise for proposals for that project. The utility procedure and billing fee ordinance revisions. Staff and the mayor has joined us, and also Amy has done some good work of reviewing our revisions. And we've actually given them back to her again to read through them and make sure I didn't miss anything. But we've revised quite a bit. We took into consideration the comments, the feedback that everybody had at the work session, and we anticipate distributing the draft for the first reading by the 13th of October to you. And barring any major glaring problems that you guys find when you look at it, I anticipate the first reading of those ordinances being on the 21st. And so that will be the utility procedure ordinance and the utility billing ordinance, fee ordinance. The capacity fee ordinance has not been edited from that first meeting, and I expect it to be presented as it was presented at the work session. Wade Hershey, our CPA, was in the last two days, and he finished the self-audit portion of the F-66. I had prepared most of the F-56. I did need a little support with some of the... They had made some changes in the report, and I just wanted to make sure I was doing it correctly. And so that was finalized today and sent in. So, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. I know that's a lot of work, and you've been worried about it for quite some time, but I'm glad it's behind us, so.
Yes, and actually about a half an hour before everybody got here, I closed out the fiscal year for '25. So I'm now.
For '24, I mean?
Twenty-five. He closed out '24, I closed out '25. So, yeah, so we can now move into '26.
All right, good.
So, yeah, I'm excited.
Thank you for that. The code enforcement officer submitted hers in writing. And next we have Craig Leesberg, our Public Works Director.
Good evening.
Hi, Craig.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. So we'll start with the Level 1 Master Plan. I talked to Lonnie this morning. We should have the final within ten days, he's hoping. That's all the deliverables with the GIES system. I talked to him about the Level 3 project, and that's still being reviewed through their office. It's got like four or five different divisions that it's got to go through. And then they're going to make a recommendation whether they support it or whether they don't. He said regardless, we still need to go down on, it's November 5th, to Casper in front of the board, and make our case. So I'm waiting to hear back on that. So that, I think, is a Wednesday. I could be wrong, though. You're fine.
I just wanted to see, you said it's a Wednesday?
I think November 5th is a Wednesday.
Yeah.
Yep. He's pretty sure that's, it's the 5th or the 6th, but he thinks that the interviews or the board is going to be on the 5th.
Okay.
Yep. Radio Read Meter Project is still moving along, a lot slower, though. The antennas should be installed the 18th, so directly after that, we should have a fully AMI system. I don't have an accurate count of how many we haven't had installed yet, but it's, I want to say right around 60. So I'm still working through that process, and then I'm working through how we're going to get to 100% of changing those meters out. So hopefully by the next, my next report, I'll have much more concrete information on that. Pretreatment Plant is up and running, and they're firing up the screw press Thursday, so that's exciting. There's a lot of issues that they've got to work through, so it's going to take some time. And then I want to point out that the engine brake signs that everybody has wanted for years are finally up, so.
Yay, and we're legal.
And we're all legal, yep.
We did it the right way, so.
And they look good.
Yeah, they do look good. Thanks for that.
Yep.
Any questions for Craig while we've gotten here? All right.
Thank you.
And Kevin, you don't have a report tonight, but did you come to say anything?
No, just for your.
You wanted us to see your smiling face, I guess. All right, thank you for that. All right, we'll move on to action items. First is the AEF Business Plan. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to accept the Alpine Education Foundation Business Plan?
Second.
We have a motion that's been seconded to discussion. So this is basically the last item to be checked off for the lease to be official. And this is, we've seen similar versions of this over the past year and a half or whatever. But it includes kind of their financial projections and things of that nature. Of course, it's still kind of up in the air as far as, you know, enrollment numbers, but those are estimated in here. But anyways, I think this is what we've been looking for, and they had an amazing fundraising event a couple weeks ago at the golf course. They had a golf tournament, and they raised a bunch of money for that, so things are progressing. So anyways, this is basically, we wanted to just bring this forward and say that we are accepting it, so to speak, and that's why it's on here. Does anyone have any questions?
I think the only thing I was concerned about was I'm only seeing a construction facility budget and not an enrollment budget. So I see like net income says 310, but like I don't see salaries for teachers, anything really drilling down. And if I'm missing it, please clarify.
I don't want to speak for them, but this is the Alpine Education Foundation's budget. It is not the charter schools' budget itself, so it would not be the governing, if I'm not mistaken, this is not the governing body budget to operate the day-to-day operations for the school. The lease holders, the education foundation. And, but those questions can probably be answered by Luke. He's doing all the financial work. And he did say that if any of you would like to talk to him or take a deep dive, and that he's happy to sit with any one of you and explain it as well.
Yeah, I would encourage.
I just noticed they started digging, I think, before their building permit, or was that the same day? I don't know if anyone.
So they do not have a building permit. There is no requirement in the town of Alpine to move dirt to grade a lot to have a permit to do so. There's no excavation permits required in the town of Alpine.
Well, so you can excavate prior to a permit.
You can. There is limitations to that if it's a function of a building. So if you're digging a foundation, that has to be done in connection with the permit. If you're just grading a lot, there's no permit required.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? All right, we have a motion on the table. All those in favor of accepting the Alpine Education Foundation Business Plan, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Just abstain.
Abstain, okay. Motion carries. Just for future reference, if you want, you can just say abstain when we ask for the vote. That's fine. Next, we're on to the single audit. Do we have a motion?
Motion to accept Decordia and Company PC 2024 Single Audit Financial Report.
Second.
We have a motion. It's been seconded. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, this is, can you give us a really concise reason why this is necessary? Why do we do this every year?
And so it was required in fiscal year 2024 because we spent more than $750,000 that was given to us by the state that was, actually came from the federal government. If you receive more than $300,000 in grant money from the federal government directly, you need to do a single audit. However, in that fiscal year, we spent more than $750,000 in grant money, so.
And this is a process that, you know, we have our CPA does this, and this is just required, and so.
Yeah, and so, and Wade, although he's a very competent CPA, he does not perform single audits. They are highly technical. There's a lot of, there's a huge amount of deep-dive work that goes into this. And so there's only a couple accounting firms that are able to perform audits for municipalities in the state of Wyoming, and Decordia is one of them.
Right, so we hired them to do it.
Yeah.
Any other questions? I definitely encourage you to do a deep dive on this and dig in, but it's a lot.
It's good stuff.
Yeah, it's, accountants love this stuff, but.
They say they don't have and give their opinion, if I may, Mr. Mayor. Basically, the sum of it in the financial statement towards the end, just to bring to light, the only thing they found that they would quote "significant deficiencies identified", and those significant deficiencies is in finding 2024-001, "the size of the town's staff is not large enough to permit a complete segregation of duties for an effective system of internal control or financial reporting." So, yeah, we're a small town, and that's true with every small town.
Yeah, most small towns in Wyoming.
So just if you're looking through and all of a sudden you go, oh my gosh, they found something. Well, that's what they found. We're a small town. And then they go on to, "our response management and the town council, we are aware of this condition. We are aware that we are a small town and have made a conscious decision to accept the resulting degree of risk because cost or other considerations."
Yeah. All right, any other questions or comments on this? All right, all those in favor of accepting the single audit, say aye.
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 Aye? Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Next, we have the appointment of Gina Corson for the Planning and Zoning Administrator. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve Resolution Number 2025-043, appointing Gina Corson as Planning and Zoning Administrator. A second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? This is, when Gina was hired as the acting, she had a 90-day probationary period, and she has done excellent work over those 90 days, and we feel like she's the proper person to take on this role. And so we're happy to appoint her, so, yeah, she's doing a great job. And a lot of people in the town will have to work with her eventually, whether you're getting a fence permit or whatever. So, yeah, hopefully you get a chance to meet Gina. But any other discussion or comments? All right, all those in favor of Resolution Number 2025-043, appointing Gina Corson as Planning and Zoning Administrator, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Next, we're on to the bank account for escrow, escrow account. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve Resolution Number 2025-044, a resolution authorizing the opening of a bank account for escrow funds with First Bank of Wyoming.
Second.
We have a motion. It's been seconded to discussion. Madam Clerk-Treasurer, can you give us the information on why this is necessary?
So it's an accounting practice, and also there is some statutory requirements that deposits should be kept, that we accept from other people, should be kept separate than all other funds. And so this is, one of those things has been on a list for a long time that needs to be done, and we're finally able to do it. So a fund will be created, so anybody who is renting property from us and has given us a security deposit, that those monies will be moved into that. We also have practices in which we accept deposits for. We also have practices in which we accept deposits for both annexation and some development fee processes, and those funds will be shifted into that account, just so they're separate.
Right, and this is a non-interest-bearing account?
It will be a non-interest-bearing account. I had spoken to Jim about it, he wasn't aware of any statutory requirement that required it to earn interest. And we also followed up with Wade when he was here, and he felt that it was probably easiest to just put it in a non-interest-bearing account. And then we will not be responsible to pay interest to somebody.
Right, when we're keeping it back there.
When we distribute the money, yes.
All right, any questions, comments? All right, all those in favor of Resolution Number 2025-044, a resolution authorizing the opening of a bank account for escrow funds with the First Bank of Wyoming, say aye.
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 Aye? Opposed? Hearing none, resolution carries. Next, on to the appointment of Councilmember Jeremy Larson to the Employee Policy Committee. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve Resolution Number 2025-042, appointing Councilmember Jeremy Larson to the Employee Policy and Procedure Committee, effective October 7, 2025.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion, it's been seconded, discussion. Madam Clerk, you might have some information on the, when this came about, or does anyone on Town Council have a recall when we did this? It was early in 2023.
Handbook, isn't it for your handbook? Policy and Procedures, yes. So back in December of 2023, that's when we originally voted on the resolution to create this committee, which was formed to give the ability for three council members to meet by forming an official committee. And I will say, count three council members plus the clerk, it is difficult over time, I've sat on this committee for the last two years, to get everybody together at the same time, so it is helpful to have an extra person on there.
Yeah.
Also, the clerk calls the meeting, not the mayor, which alleviates an issue of an official meeting that could cause a quorum and cause an issue. We discussed it with Mr. Sanderson at that council meeting because of the concerns of having a quorum. And the opinion was that since the committee wouldn't be developing laws or making decisions on spending funds, it's not an actual issue. The committee meets and discusses things and makes recommendations to the mayor or the council for approval. They don't make any decisions at that committee meeting. We are nominating Councilman Larson, as he has the longest tenure on the council and has previously acted as the employee liaison, which makes him a good choice to fill the vacant seat on the committee through the end of this year.
That's right, yeah, if this appointment would only be till the.
Right.
January reappointment.
Reappointment.
Right, exactly.
Would you guys ever consider, like, I just think of, I know Craig manages several employees, I'd like some diversity, or do we still need the committee since the handbook has been completed?
We absolutely need the committee. It's not only for handbook, it's also for employee issues. And so it's a way for me to bounce ideas off of other council members, people that, for example, you know, with Councilmember Burchard being, working for a large company, it's been very helpful to have hers on the committee because she lends kind of like this HR thing, like HR, this is how we do it in the big company sort of thing. And the employee handbook was a pretty big lift. And so that's why it came around. I absolutely think the committee is, you know, helps me a ton because, you know, as you know, everyone at the town works at the pleasure of the mayor. And to me, I'm a little embarrassed by that, but I really count on the other people on this committee to lend their advice and it's great to have someone to bounce some of these ideas off of, so. It's not appropriate for an employee other than the clerk to, who, the clerk does our HR at the town. So yeah, that's kind of the background on it.
But if Craig, as a manager, had an issue, he needed assistance with or discussion for, he could come to the committee.
He could come to anyone on the committee and ask.
Oh, yeah, no, and I meant more, I just thought his expertise with all the employees that he manages, that was what I was coming up with. I still think it should only be two council members, but that'll be my vote.
Yeah. Yeah, we meet with Craig every single week at our managers' meeting, so we have a pretty good grasp of employee issues, that's always an item. And the clerk is also involved in that meeting every Monday. And Councilmember Burchard attends that meeting, so she's always kind of brought up to date with some of those things. But anyways, that's kind of the background. Any other questions, comments? All right, all those in favor of Resolution Number 2025-042, appointing Councilmember Jeremy Larson to the Employee Policy and Procedure Committee, effective October 7, 2025, say aye.
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 Aye?
Abstain.
Opposed?
Nay.
Resolution carries. Next, we have Resolution Number 2025-045. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2025-045, a resolution recommending the appointment of Riley Havorka to the Alpine Education Foundation Board as the representative of the Town of Alpine Council.
Second.
Of the Alpine Town Council.
There we go.
We have a motion, it's been seconded, discussion. So this is a position that was insisted upon by Town Council, and it was put into the lease for the charter school that allows Town Council to appoint a member of any, any person in the community to sit on the foundation board. And I recently was introduced to Riley, and Councilmember Weirda brought this recommendation to the table, and I met with her, and she's very impressive. She is the clerk for the Town of Jackson and has a master's in public administration. So if she's, she lives in Alpine, she's lived here for like four years, and she wants to be more involved in the town of Alpine. So I thought this would be a great first step. And kind of, I literally asked her, do you want to be involved in this school? It's the most contentious thing that we have going on in the town, and she was excited about it because I don't believe she has children, but, you know, she's super excited about, you know, getting involved, and I thought this was maybe a good place for her. So I appreciate you bringing the recommendation board, and yeah, I think she'll do great. So, and this again would be an appointment through the end of the year. There might be, we'll see if she wants to do it again, or there might be a new candidate that comes forward in January. But yeah, she would start attending the town, excuse me, the school board meetings right away, so.
Did we put a public notice out for this position? Because I thought it was going to be one of the five of us.
We did not put a public, and it could have been.
Okay, I didn't know we were at this point, that we were appointing someone, so.
If no one else showed interest, that's definitely, she's the only person that was brought forward, and I don't think it's necessary to put a public notice out for this position. I think she will work well with the committee, for sure. So they actually have to ratify the appointment on their side, which is kind of a bumper system they have, for lack of a better term, to make sure that that person is going to be willing to work with them and that they can all get along. So I'm confident that that shouldn't be a problem, but we'll see. Any other questions, comments? All right, all those in favor of Resolution Number 2025-045, a resolution recommending the appointment of Riley Havorka to the Alpine Education Foundation Board as a representative of the town of, the Alpine Town Council, say aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Aye.
Abstain.
Opposed? Hearing none, resolution carries. Next, we have Resolution Number 2025-46. Does someone have a motion?
Motion to approve Resolution Number 2025-046, a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Alpine, Wyoming, recommending that the Lincoln County Commission provide live streaming of commission meetings for the benefit of the public.
Second.
Sounded like Councilwoman Scafidi got on there, beat them to it. We have a motion, it's been seconded, discussion. So this is something that I've.
We brought up like 100 times.
Yeah, we've been talking about it for more than two years now as a point of contention. And this is just an effort to encourage the leadership at the county level to livestream their meetings. They happen the first and third Tuesdays of the month, and of course, from Alpine, it's a two-hour drive if you're willing to go down there to attend. They do make a concession where you can be in front of the committee by going to Afton and getting on their, it's kind of like a closed-circuit TV.
It's just like a Zoom.
Is it like just a Zoom? Okay.
Yeah.
So, well, they do a Zoom, but anyways, I think transparency, it's been very successful for us here at the Town of Alpine, and it's really not that difficult to get the meetings livestreamed. But I think it also helps with accountability. This is something when you know what your local government's doing, you can go and re-watch the meetings. It gives you an opportunity to see what's going on and reach out to the county commissioners. So I think this is great. I only wish we did it earlier, but anyways, just so everyone knows, we have forwarded this to all the other municipalities in the county, excuse me.
Well, and I just want to chime in, I'm excited to see this one. We had spoken to Chief of Staff Stephen Allen at the commission, and we brought this up several times. I think he returned our request to the commissioners, but without much forward motion. And so one of the things, I think this is beyond just the commissioner meetings, it's the 21st century. We Zoom, we YouTube, I do believe planning and zoning under the county should be the same. There's a lot of development that goes on without people understanding the process or the timing. So I really, I want to thank you for putting this on, because this is a big one for me that I've wanted for years and years. And I think blaming whatever's going on in the building and camera is not an excuse to not be transparent with information. So I hope other municipalities join in.
We just have such a large county, and there's so many people spread out that would like to attend these meetings, but it's very hard. So I think live streaming will make a huge difference for everybody that's interested in what's going on, on the county level.
So are other municipalities doing the same?
Making the recommendations.
Making the recommendations.
Do they have a resolution? Will they be voting on that next month, or is it just something?
I did hear back, excuse me, I've got a fragment though. I did hear back from the Town of Tane, and they're interested, I think they might take our actually, our actual resolution and vote on it tomorrow night.
Oh, okay.
We've sent it to all the nine, eight other municipalities in the county, and so we'll see what happens with that.
Great. And I think what people need to understand too is, every decision the county makes, as much as it's, quote, "the county," it affects the municipality even more based on services and dynamics that way. So that would be huge. I think people would be more involved as well.
Agree. Madam Clerk, if this passes, what will you do with it?
We'll print it out, sign it, and then we'll send it to them with a nice letter.
Okay, yeah. Please, please write a letter, yeah. Yeah, I mean, a lot of the information is on here, but yeah, we could, but yeah, thank you for that.
Absolutely.
Any other questions, comments regarding this? Okay, all those in favor of Resolution Number 2025-046, I'm not going to read the rest, say aye.
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 Aye? Opposed? Hearing none, resolution carries. Next, we'll go to public comment. If anyone came for public comment, this would be your time.
Patricia McQuaid, Town of Alpine. I read through the business plan, and I was hoping for more information. You know, talked about a couple pledges, you know, from the Faristah Foundation. I didn't see anything about when that money, you know, they would get that, the Daniels Fund. That said it's, that's not usually allocated till the school is actually open, and it said something about using that for the principal. I would have liked to have seen more detail about how much money they're spending on the different aspects of getting that school ready to go. You know, how much is it going to cost to move those trailers, or is somebody doing that for free? How much is site work going to cost? How much is, you know, water and sewer hookup, putting the, you know, putting the trailers on, getting them retrofitted, whatever? I understand there's an issue with the, with the overhangs having to be fixed because they're not the right size. So, you know, that's my concern, is like I have said before, financially, I would have liked to see more detail of how much money they have where and how much money they're going to spend. I am also still looking to find out, do they have any commitments for students? They need a minimum of 100, and, you know, their projections are, we're going to start signing people up eventually. So anyway, those are still my concerns, financial and enrollment. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
I have a comment.
Yes.
Yesterday, there was a celebration in Afton for our friend, Mr..
You beat me to it.
Celebrating 40 years with the paper. Well, we really appreciate your time and what you've done and how you had the foresight to move forward into digital media and keep it going, and thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely. Congratulations. I have to also say what you guys do with covering sports is phenomenal. As the parent of a volleyball player, it's awesome to be able to watch your kid when they're on the, wherever. You know, especially when they're in Casper or something like that. So when you guys go and cover a state, that's awesome. And the football games, that's, I watched the, I didn't go to homecoming game, but I watched it from home, and it wasn't a great game, but it was, it was fun to watch still. So, yeah, thank you for that. Oh, really? Great. Wow, all the state, so each division, each 1A, 2A, 3A, 4A? Good for you.
Is it the second or third year in a row you've been able to do that?
Yeah.
So do we get to watch it on SVI this year, or is it still through that other high school sports network?
As far as the SVI, it's complicated because when we do it, we have to not only do the broadcast through the two systems, but we have to do the broadcast on the big UW screen in the stadium too, so it takes two, three producers.
Right. Well, very good. I know one of your previous staff members is working with the UW team now, and that's great, as he goes to college, Mr. Merritt, so that's amazing.
Yeah.
Yes, you have.
You've adapted, for sure. So, thank you, Dan, appreciate you being here. Any other public, all right. Could you turn that on? Thank you.
Anessa Melnick, Alpine resident, I guess I don't want to address this too. Anessa Melnick, Alpine resident. I I guess I don't know who to address this to. Currently, there are dark skies all in that area, and I'm concerned that when the school comes in, I know it seems like trivial, but like there's going to be a parking lot with lights. Are are these going to be like a night sky, light saving lights? Are they going to be on all night? Are they going to be butting up against all the neighbors? Like, you know, I used to be able to watch the all the night sky stars and everything from that area. And I'm really concerned that's all going to go away once this huge parking lot gets put in right in this area. So.
I can try to address that for you. I might have all the answers. But we've encouraged them from the very beginning to to keep our dark skies in in thinking about our dark dark skies when they develop these this lighting. We encourage them to do something similar to what the county did with the library. Those are their lights. And they adjust. So when there's motion at night, they go up. And when there's nothing, they go down to like twenty five percent or something like that. So to me, that's been an effective way to to light that area. So I don't know if we have this specification on that, but please understand that we are talking to them about that and encouraging them to go, keeping that in mind, that, you know, dark skies are important to people around here, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And they do have to meet, we do have ordinances in the town of Alpine, specifically related to dark sky. So specific amount of lumens pointing downward, they have to meet that regardless.
And I will also say that if dark skies is you're passionate about that.
Well, I just sleep really well. I don't have lights. There's no lights. It's dark, except for K J's.
Yeah, but anyways, if if you're willing to get involved in this, we would like some more encouragement from the public to bring forward a dark skies ordinance because we don't currently have one. And so if that's something you're passionate about, I would encourage you to maybe bring some more information or write an ordinance to bring to us and see if we can get some support.
I don't know how to write an ordinance.
You don't. Chat G P T?
No.
Well, anyways, if you're passionate about it, reach out to the clerk and just express your with an email or whatever. You can copy me on it. And, yeah, we'll we'll listen to you.
Okay.
Sure. Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, thank you. Do we have a motion to go into executive session?
It's removed.
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor of going into executive session, say aye.
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 Aye, and it is.